Okay. I'm assuming everybody is logged in and we're ready to go. So it is 7 o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. And this is the regular city council meeting for Minutrista, and it's February 18th. So with that, our first order of business, I'd like to ask that you join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everyone. Nobody is here in the audience this evening, but welcome to those of you watching on YouTube later on. So friendly reminder to all of us here, please turn off your cell phones or airplane mode so that they don't disrupt our meetings. So first order, I'll do introductions. We're going to start on the end over there with our public work superintendent, Gary Peters. Next to Gary, we have our city clerk, Chris Lindquist. And then on the end of the DS, we have Allison Fausky, who is our city engineer with WSB. And we have council members, Shannon Bruce, John Chamberlain, Mike Molitor, Pam Mortensen. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And to my right, our city staff, Mike Barone, our administrator, Brian Grimm, our finance director, David Abel, our community development director. And then sitting in for Ron Beatty this evening is Andrew Biggerstaff, welcome, with Kennedy and Graven. And then on the end, we have our chief of police, Paul Falls. So with that, we can move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? With hearing none then, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Chamberlain and seconded by Ms. Mortensen to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we have a special presentation by our finance director, Brian Grimm, this evening.
Yes, excuse my voice a little tonight, I'm getting over a little bit of something, I guess, or... But the fourth quarter, I guess our year-end 2019 financial update is in the packet. These are, I guess, our preliminary unaudited numbers. Our auditors will come first part of March here, week of March 9th, so... But I don't envision anything changing too much as far as our year-end numbers. As you can see, in the memo, our general fund revenues ended up at about $300,000 better than our budgeted amounts. Most of that was attributed to our building permit revenues being about almost $230,000 more than what we had budgeted. We had 140, you know, new home permits, you know, plus this year, so it was just sort of a really good year for building permits. As far as our expenditures, we came out about, at about nine, a little over 99%, about $45,000 less than the 2019 budgeted general fund expenditures. So basically, you know, rounding of a $5 million general fund budget, we basically came out at about $4,950,000. Like I said, so based on our final numbers versus actual, instead of spending down about $397,000 in fund balance, it looks like we're going to be at about $52,000 spend down there. Otherwise, yeah, what did... Page four, I just tried to do a, I added for the year-end report versus the quarter report, I just did a, sort of by the main groupings, the property taxes, building permits and licenses, intergovernmental, et cetera there, to show by grouping. Page five is then the detail revenues, showing our, you know, budget versus actual amounts there for 2019. Page six is the, basically the, by grouping of, in the general fund, by general government, public safety, public works, and you can see there's, pretty much all those amounts are, were pretty close to budgeted by those different classifications there. And then the expenditure detail is on pages seven through 11, with then our, you know, cash and investment report on page 12, showing the year-end cash balances there. So I don't know if anyone has any questions. I think, you know, the overriding theme is, I suppose it's some, you know, good news when you come, you know, especially with building permits and licenses are just so hard to budget, where you look at a three to five-year trend, and this is pretty much our highest year for permits. I think we'd even beat, last year was relatively high too, but this year even beat last year. So it's just been really strong, especially in Woodland Cove and just with development. I think we're seeing that region-wide as well as, you know, citywide. But just wanted to at least, you know, I was going to wait to present this to March, you know, until maybe the auditors have been up, but I just thought it was timely enough that we should get something in front of the council here, here in February here, so that's why I brought the preliminary numbers.
So these are unaudited numbers for the year-end, but they'll probably be fairly close?
Yep.
Yeah.
I had a question. On the revenue side, on page five, and I asked Mr. Barone this morning, so I think he said I'd be asking this tonight. On page five, the eighth line up from the bottom, the interest on investments is 261% more than we anticipated, and I was just curious what that was due to, why that happened.
Yeah, and the main driver in that line item is both our interest as well as our adjustment to market value. And I think with the rate cuts this year by the Federal Reserve and stuff, pretty much everything's been, I mean, I even just, I got a report from like Wells Fargo, who's one of our main brokers today, and the appreciation on our investments, and this is portfolio Y, because portion gets allocated to the general fund, it's pool of cash and investments, was $178,000 this year, when last year was basically about $59,000. So it's just, yeah, a lot of the, and the hard part, with the market value adjustments, it's really just a paper number.
It's a paper number, yeah.
It's not actually cash.
Right.
And so, and I looked at the interest revenue, or I guess interest and fair market adjustments from the previous, some three years where we ended up at, we were at $34,000, $31,000, and $38,000. So I think that's just the way the market factors with marking basically cost to market or that adjustment, sort of inflated that number. And obviously, at some point, there's going to probably be an adjustment down then or whatever for that. But it's just, you know, basically the way the government accounting standards are, that you mark your investments to market versus par or cot, you know, so I don't know if that's, it's sort of a little bit of a...
If you were to cash out today, all of your investments, that's what the increase would be over last year. But obviously, you don't cash them out.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
As far as...
So it's on paper.
Yeah, it's sort of a timing difference as far as how basically the CD and agency markets and stuff are doing the things that we invest in as a city, so.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. So good news. Yeah, the expenditures have come in very close to budgeted. It's just that we didn't expect the revenues to come in so much higher.
No, and it's just whether that trend will continue, but it just seems like it's, you know, we've talked about how we even use even for a lot of our other, you know, our water fund and, you know, the 75 connections, you know, a year, you know, and when you look back, that's, you know, over a 10-year trend, that's about usually where we add up right now. We're just over 100, you know, several years from now, we could be at 50 or something. But as long as we're having some sustained growth, and right now, we're just in a real high-growth period, I guess, so.
Right.
Brian, a question for you. On the actual expenditures of 4.954, when we do our calculation of reserve percentage, I assume that's what you're using as your denominator in that equation?
Well, there's two different calculations. We make a lot of times, we look at what the budget for the next year, or the current year that we're in now, it's the 2020, because, yeah, I think our budget for this year is more like 5.13, you know, so it's a little higher than the, you know, the $5 million budget this year. But, yeah, so usually, we'll look at, yeah, the fund balance into that as far as the calculation. So I think, I think we had budgeted to be spent down to closer to the, you know, 50% at the end of this year, or for 40s, but with this number, I think it's in the low to mid 50s, now when I did a quick look at it or something, so.
That's, because that's kind of where I'm going. When I, when I look at this number, the 494, then if you go to page, wherever we have the balances listed, which I'll get there as soon as I get to it.
12? The fund balance?
Yeah, it's all about right.
Yeah.
Page 12. Now, again, this, oh, this is 1231, I see a number here of 3.3 in the general fund.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, the one thing, caveat I'll make there is, the cash balance is about 3.3 million. We've got about half a mil... Our liabilities are exceeding our receivables, our non-cash assets versus our liabilities is like about 400,000, 500,000 less. A lot of it's in temp COs and stuff like that, where our actual fund balance is probably 2.85 or something. So if you take like 2.85 divided by 5.13, I think that's, that would be our calculation. So this is purely cash, which our cash is a little, we've got a lot of, yeah.
You're overstated.
Payables and refunds to make.
All right, because otherwise, I was doing...
Yeah, otherwise, it would be like a 60-some percent.
Yeah, it was like 67%.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our fund balance is actually in that, yeah, 2.85 or something, or whatever it's going to be, so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Good question, yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Brian. That's a good update, good news. So now, we don't have anybody here for persons to be heard, so we will move on to consent agenda items. Are there any that you wish to remove?
Yes, I'd like to remove B, the work session minutes from February 3rd, the regular meeting minutes from February 3rd, and the Sunny Field Road traffic study, E. So B, C, and E.
All right. Any other ones? Otherwise, that remain, the remaining are that you approve the work session meeting minutes from January 21st of 2020. D is a resolution to approve the claims. And F is a resolution to approve the residual fund balance transfers from the Roundabout and Kings Point Road debt funds to the road maintenance fund. That was, I think, nearly 65, just under 65,000. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items, A, D, and F?
Some of them.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Chamberlain. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to the work session meeting minutes. Ms. Bruce?
Thank you. The work session minutes on page 17 of our council packet, at the bottom of page 17, there's a statement that says, Bruce would like to wait until November to finance the water tower and equipment due to the election and interest rates. That isn't what I said or meant. And I, just to expedite this, I sent this email to council members. Do you need it? Do people need it? You've seen it. What, what my position was, is I was advocating to, I was advocating to use revenue bonds now, and if we were going to use GO bonds, to put the GO bonds off until after the election. And what I was advocating for was, I was just talking about the water tower, I wasn't talking about the equipment at all.
So, Ms. Bruce, maybe what you, maybe that's what you meant?
No.
But, no, just hold on a second.
It's what I said, and I have the video here, if you'd like me to play it. I would like to play it during the meeting, because it's exactly what I said.
Hold on just a minute. Okay. What you said was, you're correct, you're in favor of a revenue bond versus a GO bond. I didn't understand or hear you to say that you were in favor of a revenue bond now. Oh, except, I'm sorry.
It says in the video, and I can play it for you now.
All right. That's fine. I think the bottom line is, I'm not arguing with you, I'm saying that you opposed the GO bond, correct? And you preferred a revenue bond?
Right.
And you stated...
And I said I would be open to using a revenue bond.
And, okay, just a minute.
Later.
And you stated that you wanted to wait until after the elections to finance the water tower. I think those are all accurate, correct? So what I'm getting at...
It's not accurate, because I was willing to finance the water tower now with revenue bonds.
Okay.
And this statement makes it appear as if I'm putting off the water tower, not wanting to build the water tower. If you read this, that's what it sounds like. That was not my intention.
I understand that. So what, but what I want to get at is, one, the minutes aren't verbatim, okay?
I know.
So let's, so they're not, they're not verbatim. Same with Mr. Molitor's statement, it kind of gave an overview of what he, he said, it didn't verbatim. So I'm hesitant, hold on just a second, I'm hesitant to say, let's put your comment in here verbatim. I'm not hesitant...
No, I'm not asking for a verbatim quote in the minutes. What I, what I offered, Ms. Lindquist, was a statement that would accurately reflect what was actually said at the meeting. And if that statement is put in the minutes, it would accurately reflect what I said at the meeting. If you don't want to do this, then you can just put in that I had some concerns about the water tower financing. But I am not, I am not going to let this statement be in here, because it, it makes it appear that I'm not wanting to build the water tower, and I know how those things get used.
I, I know that, and I, I'm not opposing you on that. But, so if it says, Bruce had concerns about financing the water tower with GO bonds, would that be accurate?
That would be accurate.
Okay. Is that okay, that we put it in that way? I, what I'm, what I'm hesitant to do is getting into this long, detailed explanation...
Well, and these minutes did get into some long, detailed explanations from several people on the council, including you, Madam Mayor. So if, if you're going to quote someone...
No, I don't think it...
If you're going to paraphrase, you need to paraphrase accurately. And if you're not sure what something meant...
Here it says, "Molitor suggested reducing the GO bond to 500,000 and using the funds from, from the water fund." Okay, that wasn't exactly what he said, but it was the, the meaning of what he said.
And I would be fine if he just said that I had some concerns about financing the water tower with GO bonds.
Can we just do that?
I think, I think we can do that.
That would be fine.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
All right. So, we're going to change that. I think, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Concerning the financing of the water and all of the GO bonds.
All right. All right. Thank you. Is there, are there any other changes?
Not to the work session minutes, I do for the...
Okay. Well, let's then approve the work session minutes with that change. Is there a motion to approve the work session minutes with that change?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the work session meeting minutes with that change as we stated. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. And now we can move on to the regular council meeting minutes. Ms. Bruce?
On page 20, towards the bottom of the page, where it says Bruce commented that she would be voting no to this agenda item because she is not sure, I would just like that to say, Bruce commented she would be voting no on this agenda item because she is not confident in how the water is going to be funded.
I, I would agree with that. I think that's...
Thank you.
Very close to what you said.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay. Again, I want to make sure that we have an overall view.
I don't need to be reprimanded or admonished for correcting the minutes when they're not accurate.
She's not reprimanding you.
Could I just make a motion to approve the...
Thank you. Okay, a motion has been made with that change. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A second has been made by Ms. Mortensen. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll move on to our, the next one, which is approve the agreement with District 277 for the Sunny Field Road traffic study. Again, Ms. Bruce?
Yes, on page 33, I was just wanting to confirm the cost, because the traffic study before, it was estimated at 18,000, and this is coming in at 10, and it was just a lot lower than what we talked about initially.
I don't think it ever was said 18,000.
Well, that's the estimate that we were given before we ever even talked to the school district, and I just wanted to make sure that these numbers were accurate.
Madam Mayor, if I may, the 10,700 number reflected in the council packet on page 33 is the amount that was brought forward to the council at that January 21st meeting and authorized, so that's the amount of the traffic study in this instance. I'm not sure where that 18,000 dollar number came from.
And the city's share is half of that?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, I never saw the 18,000. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution approving the cost share agreement with West Tonka School District for the Sunny Field Road traffic study?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Chamberlain. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Next, we'll move on to our business items, since we have no public hearings. This is accept improvements and approve the final payment to Ram Excavating for the Halsted Drive project. Who has taken that?
I think over the years, we all have.
Yeah, yeah, really.
We'll let Mr. Biggerstaff go on this one.
Okay.
All right, Madam Mayor and members of the council, as you recall, last month, I believe it was, we talked in closed session about the idea of a settlement agreement as it relates to Halsted, the Halsted Road project. Based on that discussion, we were given direction to go forward and work with everybody to come up with that settlement agreement. So what we're presenting tonight is the terms of the settlement agreement. I think the big highlights are, as we discussed, the city is, Ram Excavating will need to comply with, there's seven closeout items that have to be finished before the project is considered complete. When Ram has finished those seven items, the city will, if the settlement agreement is approved, will become obligated, I guess you could say, to pay Ram their final payment request, but at a lower negotiated rate. And part of that rate, part of the settlement idea is that Ram will, has negotiated to take a lower payment for their portion, and WSB has also agreed to participate in a cost share with the city, given that there were some engineering overruns and things. So the terms of the settlement agreement are fairly straightforward, I think. They reflect the conversation that we had in that closed session, and the negotiations, I think, went well. People were, you know, were good to work with, so, so it's, there's nothing really new in this agreement from what you've heard before. And like I said, if this agreement is approved tonight, that will sort of put in motion, hopefully, the end of the project. And I do believe that Ram has submitted some of the materials. I don't know if the city engineers had an opportunity to review that, or can maybe talk about where we're at on the timeline?
Certainly, Madam Mayor, if I may. Ram did submit some material, closeout materials last week. It was, it was due to the amount of material, it took a few days to go through it. I responded back to Ram today based on a couple items that were apparent that were missing from that packet. And then we continued to go through some compliance paperwork for the state aid funding portion of this project, and I indicated to Ram that that review is still underway. So we have communicated with them where we're at. It's not complete at this time, and still portions of it under review.
Okay. So we won't make that final payment till we get everything?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Biggerstaff. Anybody have questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the, well, the agreement, I guess?
There's a resolution of the packet, yeah.
Accept improvements and approve the final payment to Ram Excavating for Halsted Drive.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So we'll move on to administrative items, staff reports. Mr. Barone, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I just have a couple of items. First is a reminder of our next meeting will be on Monday, March 9th. That's the second Monday of the month, not the first. We do have a work session scheduled for that night, and I will be sending out to the council tomorrow a revised, we had to flip-flop to be on the next meeting, and I'll note that in a, in my email cover to you. But we're still tracking on doing the strategic plan. I don't have a set time, I do have it marked as early start. I don't have a time as our early start, so I will be trying to get that information to you yet this week, so you can adjust your schedules as such to be able to attend that. Second item and final item I have is just a quick update on our process for the Director of Administration position. We have given a conditional offer to a final candidate. That person is actually right now in the process of going through the background investigation via our PD. Timeline is, I hope, at our next meeting, which again is March 9th, to have a kind of wrapped-up process, and so we will hopefully be recommending the approval of the hiring of our, our next Director of Administration. So backgrounds for, I don't know, I guess I want to say civilian employees are a lot less strenuous, but nonetheless, do take a little bit of time. So I know not only the people doing the background in PD working on this one, they're also working on the police officer hires. So even though this process was slightly behind, the police officer hire, you may see the Director of Administration start before the police officer starts, so it just takes that long, so. So that's what I have.
City engineer, anything?
Just a couple items, Madam Mayor. We're still working with the enchanted tuxedo contractor to close out that project, trying to arrange a meeting with the contractor and their subcontractor to go over a couple items that they'd like to visit, so that, we're hoping that that'll come to closure here soon. And then, as mentioned, during the work session, we did have the bid opening for the Halsted Mill and Overlay project. Bids came in favorably. We had eight bidders, and the lowest bidder was Northwest, which was the contractor on last year's project. So they worked really well with us, and we're hoping for another good project from them.
And it came in quite a bit under?
It came in at just under 196,600. I'd have to take, I believe that was verified in the tabulation, and our estimate for construction was about 236,000, and then we typically budget an additional 5% contingency on top of that, so.
So that should be coming to the next meeting for approval?
Correct. Yeah, that'll be to the May 9th. We just, we were about a day late on the, the bid tabulation to make it to the packet for tonight's meeting, so that's why it's on the March 9th meeting.
Well, that's, that's good news.
That's good news.
And maybe they'll bid on the projects for Margaret Circle.
I know Gary would feel okay with that.
Yeah.
They're very good.
They're very good to work with, yeah. I heard that. All right. Anything else by staff? Do you have Planning Commission meeting in February?
Um, we do, I, we don't know, we haven't received many applications yet, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
We do not.
All right. So you don't need somebody to be there?
Not at the moment, I don't think so.
All right. Okay. I'm sure...
I'll let everyone know if I do.
I was going to say, I'm sure Mike will volunteer. [laughing]
Wow. Or not.
All right. So we'll move on to council reports. We'll start with Ms. Bruce.
I went to the mound fire commission meeting with the mayor and Mr. Barone, and most of the budget centered around financial things, and Chief Peterson was here and pretty much gave everybody an idea of what we were talking about that night, too. We have a fund balance for 2019 of about $200,000 more than we anticipated, so that's good news. It's at 552, 552,000. It was projected at 325. And the biggest challenge, I think, is coming up is the staffing model there, and we continue there. And we continue to talk about a fire district and when that might happen. And I think sooner or later, we're going to have to discuss that and pound that out because I think there are advantages to taking advantage of the things that St. Bonnie Fire Department has and equipment that is on the mound list that we could share. And it would just, it would make sense to combine that equipment and not have to buy separate things for separate departments. There was, there are economies to be gained by doing that. And they raised seven thousand for the mound lunch, which was great. They beat Orno. That's all I have.
Mr. Trumperlin?
We'll be attending Pioneer Sarah Creek this Thursday. No offense.
The WCC meeting was canceled due to the memorial for Pat, is it myself?
Myself.
On the same day.
Yep.
So I participated in the interviews for the Director of Administration. We had a police advisory meeting with St. Bonnie and, and us. And with the mayor there, we did talk about briefly, just mentioned wanting to have discussions about a fire district. So he's aware of that, and we'll probably have more discussions. Northwest League, we had, I attended Northwest League, and our guest speaker was the brand-new appointed Chair for the Met Council, Charlie Zelli. And we talked about also the league, the Northwest League. We're talking about fire districts there as well. And there's a lot of interest by, there's about twelve to fourteen cities within, that participate in the Northwest League, and there's some interest there creating some different fire districts. I also attended the Fire Commission meeting. I also attended the West Metro Drug Task Force luncheon. And I also attended the memorial service for former Mayor Mizel of Mound. It was well-attended, probably, I'm guessing, two hundred people, maybe. And then also just want to make, let everybody know, on March 12th, there's going to be a mayor's forum at seven o'clock in Shorewood, at the Shorewood Community Center. It's hosted by the League of Minnesota, the League of Women Voters, something like, anyhow. And they host us every year, and I think it's the, myself, the mayor of Greenwood, ex, mayor of Shorewood, mayor of Tonka Bay. There's like five or six that are in this, in their, that district. So I will be there and attending that. Then I have, I have one other thing that I, I think we need to, that I need to bring up. And it's not something that I like to do, but it, when I found this out, it really concerned me. Because, so this is, this is a blog, one of the entrants from Shannon, Councilmember Bruce's blog. And I'm just going to read it, and then I want to just say a few things and ask a few questions. And it says, I've been, this is what her blog says, "I've been meeting with residents in Minatrista neighborhoods over the last several weeks, and invariably someone asks, always asks, what's so important about this year's city election? And the answer, outside interests are running the city, and none of them live or pay taxes here in Minatrista. Outside consultants, contractors, vendors, and organizations put pressure on the council to serve their interests ahead of yours. Consequently, taxes go up every year and will continue at an even faster pace, pace going forward. We are growing and have important decisions coming up next year that impact your property rights, taxes, fees, and freedoms. I'm also hearing from residents frustrated in their dealings with the city as they seek permits, variances, or access to information. Rather than having an excellent experience, they often leave irritated and angry. Instilling a service-oriented culture at City Hall is important for residents to be treated with respect and for staff to understand that their purpose is to serve the community. Unlike private sector businesses that know their survival depends on treating customers well, public sector organizations can become complacent knowing their customer has nowhere else to go." This concerns me, and I'm, because I work closely with staff, and I work closely with our consultants, and I can tell you that we have an excellent group of individuals working here at City Hall. And I can also tell you that they bend over backwards at times to help and make our residents figure out their problems. I'll just give you one example recently-
I did, I did not write that as a council member. This is not the place to discuss this. If you want to campaign during a city council meeting-
I'm not campaigning.
Then you can go right ahead and do that, but that, that-
I'm not-
This is not the place for campaigning. And I-
I'm not-
Wrote that as a private individual. That has no place being discussed at this council meeting.
My concern is that you, all of us sitting here, are their bosses. That's what we are.
Together, we are.
That's right.
I didn't write that as a council member. I wrote that as Shannon Bruce, and Shannon Bruce running for mayor of Minatrista. That is, I did not write that as a council member, and that has no business being discussed at a council meeting. Would you bring a resident from Minatrista that had a problem with staff, that was angry at staff because they weren't treated respectfully, would you treat, would you bring them to a council meeting and admonish them for speaking about it?
The, the thing is, Shannon, Ms. Bruce, Councilmember Bruce, you have to understand that, yes, you are a resident, but you wear your hat as a council member at all times.
And I'm wearing my hat as a council member. In these council chambers, what I say outside of these council chambers has no place being discussed here.
Why would you write this? I guess that's my question.
I stand by everything that I wrote. I've been meeting with residents throughout the city for the last several weeks, and that is what I'm hearing.
Okay, and you said in, in, in your blog that they've, you're hearing from residents that they're frustrated with their dealings. Did you contact city staff and talk to them about that?
They did.
And who are these people? Could you share that with staff?
This does not have a place here at a city council meeting.
What I'm trying to get at-
No, I'm not, I'm not going to tolerate this. This is a private blog that I write as a private residence, and it has no place being discussed here. And if you want to campaign for mayor-
I'm not campaigning.
By admonishing me for saying things that I believe and, and residents are telling me, then-
When I have staff members that are very upset about this, I think, as a council member, you should be aware of that. I think if you have people coming to you-
Then you should come and talk to me privately about this. If you have problems with something I'm saying, come talk to me directly about it. Don't admonish me at a city council meeting.
This is public information. This is public information that I just read, and it's-
And it has no place being discussed here.
I, I just would like to note that the survey that we did back a couple years ago had incredible high rankings for our staff, and I want you to know that. There may be a few people out there that aren't happy with something, but overall, you guys got over ninety percent approval rating in efficiency and courtesy. And I do want to make that known out to the people that are watching this video, because I, I did have people comment on that as well. And they were disappointed to hear those comments coming from a council member.
And I, I do not name any single staff person or criticize any single staff person because I don't do that. These are comments that people are telling me, and I'm writing about them in my blog. And I, I think we do have a competent staff. But I, I'm writing about what people are saying. And I'm writing it as a resident, as a private individual, not as a council member. So can we please-
People that are reading it-
Can we get back to city business, please?
I just want to say, people that read it, though, do take you as a council member. So, you know, just keep that in mind, that when they do read it, the name Shannon Bruce is known as a council member.
Like I said, we wear our hats as mayor, as council members, all the time. We're a council member twenty-four seven. We're a mayor twenty-four seven. So I do want to, I do want to say one thing. There was an incident where a resident was upset regarding plowing. And I do have to give kudos and say to Gary and to Mike Broney, thank you very, very much for bending over backwards. A gentleman called and was upset about the way his street was being plowed, and, and he was quite irate. And, and Gary and Mike Broney, they went the extra mile. They actually went out to his property and met with him to discuss his issues, and they worked out a way to, to make him happy, if you will. And not too many people in a city of our size, not too many staff members in a city of our size, will take the time to do that. I also heard just the other day from a gentleman that gave Gary high praises and had nothing but good to say about Gary and his crew. And I've also heard from people regarding our planning department and how professional they are and what a good experience they've had. And I, I think it's important to point that out and to, to say that to our staff, that we appreciate what you do on a daily basis. And we appreciate, you know, you get a lot of guff at times. And sometimes it's hard to take because I do know you work really hard at helping our residents. So with that, I'm going to conclude. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Maliter. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0.